We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we have Pastor Philip Newman of the Grace Baptist Church. Pastor?
Lord, I say, my Father, how we do first of all praise you for yourself, your love, your grace, your mercy to each one of us. Lord, how we thank you for America, we believe the greatest nation in our world today. We do pray for the election tomorrow. We are grateful that we live in a country where we get to vote and help us each to exercise that wonderful privilege that we have. I do pray for this city council meeting. Thank you for our mayor and all of our aldermen. Thank you for each one that works for our city and the good job that they do. We pray for your blessing upon them, for your grace, your wisdom, and all the decisions that have come before them, many of those decisions affecting, of course, the citizens here in our community. And we pray also that you would help each one of our city workers, those in our police force, our fire department, and all others that give of their time, their effort, their energy. And, Lord, we would also be mindful to pray for those that are out in the northeast who have suffered so much because of the hurricane and getting ready to perhaps experience another storm, less in intensity, but still going to be further trouble for them. Be with all the workers out there that are working diligently to relieve the difficulties that they are experiencing. Give them safety and just watch over each one. May the problems be resolved soon. We ask this now in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
John Bertle.
Here.
Bernie Dorchenez.
Here.
Rob Heatherling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Koontz.
Here.
John Lawrence.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
John Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Koontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
John Bertle.
Motion passes eight to zero. The actual minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the regular meeting held October fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, minutes of the finance committee meeting held October sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, minutes of the ordinance committee meeting held October sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, minutes of the public facilities committee meeting held October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, minutes of the street and sewer committee meeting held October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, minutes of the emergency services committee meeting held November first, two thousand and twelve, and minutes of the personnel committee meeting held November first, two thousand and twelve. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Amen.
Alderman Bertle, second.
Second.
Alderman Lawrence, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
And Dorchenez?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, next on the agenda, we had the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission did not meet tonight. They did not have a quorum, so that meeting was canceled, so we have nothing to take action on there. Next, we have a resolution. This is a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus realty, this being the Germaine property, what was known as the Germaine property at twenty-six Alini Drive here in Taylorville. I entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Salute.
Alderman Voda, second by Alderman Koontz. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have a resolution regarding a real estate lease agreement with Rick and Lisa Jampley. I entertain a motion to approve that resolution. Alderman Dorchenez, second by Alderman Voda. Go ahead with your comment, Alderman Bertle.
Gentlemen, you received an amended copy of that agreement. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read through that in detail. This is a real estate agreement between the Jampleys and the city of Taylorville regarding some land out at the lake. This is for a two-year lease. The lease by statute can be two years or less without having to go for bid. A little bit of history behind this. Mr. Jampley did approach the city. We did not readily pursue leasing this property. With that said, we added one line into the primary terms at the bottom of the first page. I believe it's highlighted in yellow with the amended copy. Just basically, a little bit of the opportunity that after the two years that we have agreed to here, that prior to any renewals, we'll have the opportunity to review the charges and what fees we will be receiving in future leases should that occur. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was on board with that. If there were any questions, I would be glad to entertain them prior to a voting taking.
Any questions or comments regarding this?
Thank you, Your Honor.
No, no, no. Roll call, please.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
The next motion, I'd like to make a change to, I'll give you some history on this. The motion made at the October the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, Street and Sewer Committee meeting regarding McIntyre and Company pay request retainage Kenmore Phase Two and Kenmore Phase Three and Larry Service Center is incorrect. The amount on the letter billed from the city was listed incorrectly as ten thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-two cents instead of ten thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents, although the rest of the figures include the original balance to be paid are all correct. So I'd like to make a new motion that upon the recommendation of City Engineer Joe Green to approve forty percent of the pay request from McIntyre and Company for retainage for Kenmore Phase Two, seventy thousand two thirty-nine thirty, Kenmore Phase Three, sixty thousand nine nineteen oh one, and Larry Service Center for one thousand four hundred and five dollars and eighty cents, less the city of Taylorville bill for labor equipment materials for the Kenmore projects of ten thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents, making a total payment of forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. That's my motion.
Second. Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comments? Hearing done, go ahead.
It's an amended motion as opposed to a new motion. Would that be an amended motion?
Okay.
Did you state it a new motion?
Whatever, if that's proper with...
Amended.
Amended, okay.
Amended motion.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Koontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenez?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
The next motion, I'd like to make a change to, I'll give you some history on this. The motion made at the October the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, Street and Sewer Committee meeting regarding McIntyre and Company pay request retainage Kenmore Phase Two and Kenmore Phase Three and Larry Service Center is incorrect. The amount on the letter billed from the city was listed incorrectly as ten thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-two cents instead of ten thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents, although the rest of the figures include the original balance to be paid are all correct. So I'd like to make a new motion that upon the recommendation of City Engineer Joe Green to approve forty percent of the pay request from McIntyre and Company for retainage for Kenmore Phase Two, seventy thousand two thirty-nine thirty, Kenmore Phase Three, sixty thousand nine nineteen oh one, and Larry Service Center for one thousand four hundred and five dollars and eighty cents, less the city of Taylorville bill for labor equipment materials for the Kenmore projects of ten thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents, making a total payment of forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. That's my motion.
Second. Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comments? Hearing done, go ahead.
It's an amended motion as opposed to a new motion. Would that be an amended motion?
Okay.
Did you state it a new motion?
Whatever, if that's proper with...
Amended.
Amended, okay.
Amended motion.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Make a motion to direct the city clerk to prepare an ordinance vacating Rick Street on the south side of Gandy Street for future expansion of the cemetery.
Second.
Second.
Second alderman Bertle, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Make a motion that due to the holidays, the November Street and Sewer Committee and Public Facilities Committee be changed to November the 29th, and to keep the December meeting on the 27th and cancel if not needed.
Get a second on that?
Second.
Second alderman Coontz, discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? That motion passes.
Make a motion to allow Superintendent Wiseman to enter into an agreement with Alt Harfer Incorporated for preventive maintenance on five heavy equipment vehicles.
Get a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Coontz, discussion or comments?
Comment.
Go ahead.
We will be able to see that at your next street and sewer committee meeting, the contracts.
If we get those, and my superintendent's not here to see me, yes, we will have those.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Next motion is to approve the minutes of the October 16th, 2012 tree board meeting.
Second alderman Bertle, discussion or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor? Against? That motion passes.
Motion to remove the stray cedar tree at 311 West Adams Street near the corner of Adams and Webster Street.
Second alderman Bertle, discussion or comments?
I'll help on that, your honor. That tree is blocking the view at the intersection in both directions as well as it's toward the sidewalk, up, it's heaved the sidewalk.
All right, roll call, please.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes. Motion passes eight to zero.
Next motion was to authorize chief Hackney to employ ATI Services of Illinois LLC to perform the necessary brake services to fire engine one with a cost not to exceed $2,000. I'd like to make that important motion.
Okay. Get a second?
Second.
Second alderman Voda, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
The next motion was to authorize chief Hackney to employ ATI Services of Illinois LLC to perform the necessary brake services to fire engine three with a cost not to exceed $3,000. I'd like to make that important motion.
That motion? Second alderman Heverly, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Brings us to personnel committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Cindy Brown to the human resource position full-time.
Second.
Second alderman Jones, discussion or comments? The only comment I have is that Cindy's worked very hard here these ninety days. She's been basically trying the job on and she's impressed, I think, most of us around here how quickly she's caught on. And I think it's a very positive thing for the city that we were able to move her there and she fit in that position, so.
I'd like to acknowledge what you just said. Cindy is, we work closely with her in the treasurer's office in matters of payroll and human resource contracts. She's done a very good job. She's a quick study, very, very thorough, very detail-oriented, and the files are in great shape and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I know when I call the mayor's office, there's a deep voice now that answers.
That's right, yeah, yeah. I don't know where I am or why I'm here. Okay.
And just one more comment. When you said she fits in that position, did you mean because her office is smaller now?
Well, it helps too, yes, yes.
And her stature?
Okay, there you go. Roll call, please.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Motion to bid and/or advertise for the heavy equipment operator position at the lake department.
Second.
Second alderman Voda, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
And we have a motion to bid for an equipment operator two and to bid and/or advertise for an equipment operator one for the street department.
I'll second that, your honor.
Second alderman Walters, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heverly?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coons?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Heverly?
I think all of you guys have seen under any other matters, we had a discussion at our last personnel committee meeting on perhaps rescinding the motion that was made back in March to hire an additional police officer. The discussion Thursday night was about doing that and doing that until we get a firm feel for exactly where our negotiations are going to go with the police union. So probably within the upcoming near future, you will see that on an agenda. If you would, in between now and then, if you would give that some thought. But I think it is something that we need to consider. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think that's a good point. I mean, it's been so frustrating the last few years of not being able to work with them and come to an agreement and then happen to go to arbitration and then literally spend tens of thousands of dollars that could much better be used here locally. So we hope we don't have to go down that path again. Alderman Bertle?
I made this comment at the personnel committee meeting. I just want to make it one more time that, you know, we also, we've got to be cautious that we're not punishing the whole department or the citizens for a lack of cooperation and negotiation, you know, because the police department can't do certain things now in the public is for a lack of help. So, you know, the message we might be trying to get across may not get to people